Okay. This takes us to item -- thank you all again. And you're free to go on with your evening. This takes us to 8.1, which is an urgency interim ordinance. And who's going to give the staff report?
Madam Mayor, I'll be giving the report.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Michael Guena, City Attorney. For your consideration, tonight is an urgency interim ordinance which establishes a moratorium on the issuance of an annual cabaret or dance hall license. If the City Council wishes to adopt the interim ordinance as an urgency measure, you must make certain findings, which I'll go over later on in my report, and adopt the ordinance by a four-fifths vote of the council. That's a four-fifths vote of the total membership of the council. Given that there are four council members present tonight, in order for the urgency ordinance to pass tonight, all four members must vote in favor of the ordinance. If adopted, the measure would go into effect immediately, and it would be in effect for 45 days initially. It may be extended for a further period of time, which I'll get into in my report. In terms of background, the reason that this is being considered tonight is in relation to the Trader Vic's Restaurant located on the peninsula. Trader Vic's is located adjacent to the Watergate condominiums, and its operations include live music for its patrons. Over the years, residents at the Watergate condominiums have complained about noise impacts as well as traffic impacts to the neighborhood. In 2004, representatives from Watergate and the city met to discuss those concerns and had come to an agreement about the operations at Watergate, and that agreement was memorialized in October 2004, a letter which is attached to your staff report. My understanding is that after that meeting and letter had been issued, that complaints from the residents had declined. However, recently, the number of complaints particularly relating to noise at the restaurant has increased. As a result, at the request of Vice Mayor Davis, staff has prepared this urgency interim ordinance which would prohibit the issuance of a annual cabaret license while the city considers any potential amendments to its regulations regarding noise, the cabaret ordinance, or zoning. In terms of the cabaret ordinance itself, that ordinance is found in Chapter 4 of Section 5 of the municipal code. And in summary, a cabaret is currently defined as an event that provides live entertainment at a venue which is generally open to the public. In order to obtain an annual permit, the applicant must provide a series of materials including -- and must also obtain a conditional use permit from the city's planning commission. That CUP must address issues including security, lighting, and parking. After complete application is received, the application is forwarded to the City Council with a recommendation from the police chief and the city manager. The City Council is then the issuing authority for that annual permit. The permit expires on -- automatically expires on December 31st of each year, and the applicant must reapply for an annual permit if they wish to continue their operations into the new year. The cabaret ordinance was adopted in 1999 and has not been amended since its adoption. So the proposed interim ordinance before you would prohibit the approval or issuance of an annual cabaret license. I want to clarify -- I would like to clarify that the interim ordinance does not prohibit the issuance of a single cabaret license, which is issued once a quarter, and that is issued administratively by the police chief. In terms of the authority under which you might adopt an interim ordinance, the government code allows the City Council to adopt urgency measures prohibiting any uses that may be in conflict with its zoning or specific or general plans, or any studies that the City Council might wish to undertake in relation to its zoning regulations or its general or specific plans. After adoption -- after making the requisite findings and adopting the ordinance by a four-fifths vote, the ordinance would be effect -- be in effect for 45 days. Thereafter, the interim ordinance could be extended up to two additional times for an additional 10 months and 15 days, and then subsequently after that for an additional year. Any extension would also require a four-fifths vote of the council, and no more than the two amendments or two extensions would be adopted. In terms of the finding that you're required to make in order to adopt the ordinance, the council must find that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the approval of the cabaret license would result in a threat -- would result in that threat to the public health, welfare, and safety. In your staff report, I have detailed findings that you might be able to make regarding those threats to public health, welfare, and safety for your consideration. So in conclusion, in order to adopt the ordinance, the City Council must make the finding that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the approval of an annual cabaret license under the current regulations would result in a threat to public health, welfare, and safety. The ordinance would be in effect for 45 days, at which point it would expire unless extended as described above. So in addition to consideration of the interim ordinance, we're also asking for any direction you might give in relation to amending the cabaret ordinance itself, amending the noise ordinance, or planning regulations or zoning regulations regarding, you know, where cabarets might be permitted, or if you have any additional findings, any additional findings beyond those that are provided in your staff report. And that's the conclusion of my report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for the City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, I have some clarifying questions.
Do we have public comment first about this?
We'll ask questions first and then have a public comment.
Does Trader Vic's currently have an annual cabaret license?
No, they do not.
Have they ever had one?
To my knowledge, no. And just to clarify, there are currently no cabaret licenses that have -- annual cabaret licenses that are issued in the city.
Okay. And none in recent memory?
The most recent one was -- we issued was to Kitties, which is now--
That was a bar.
Prizefighter, thank you. That was at least four years ago, I'm guessing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Have the police received any applications currently for a cabaret license?
I would look to the police chief.
For an annual?
For any cabaret.
For any kind of -- yeah. I believe we do have an application from Trader Vic's.
For an annual license.
For their quarterly--
For a quarterly, yes. So Trader Vic's had applied for and received a quarterly single-use -- a quarterly single cabaret license back in October, I believe, and that had been issued to them.
Last month.
Last month. Last month, yes.
So this proposed interim ordinance, would this prevent any more quarterly applications?
No. No. The -- if adopted, this ordinance would not affect any applications for quarterly -- quarterly applications. They could still be issued -- they could still be applied for, and they could still be issued. And as a reminder, those -- the issuing authority is the police chief. That's done administratively. There is no issuance by the City Council.
Sorry, one more question. Can you just clarify for the public whether or not a private party at Trader Vic's would be affected by the interim ordinance?
Thank you. No, it would not. A private party, as I had mentioned earlier, our cabaret license currently defines a cabaret as an event where there is live entertainment, and admission to that event is by -- is open to the public generally. That is the definition of a cabaret. So therefore, a private party that may have live entertainment but where admission is only available to invited guests, that does not fall within the definition of a cabaret, and therefore, that event would not require a cabaret license in order to be held. I would note that those private parties, however, would still be subject to other city regulations, zoning, parking issues, and the noise ordinance.
Thank you.
I have a clarifying question for you, Michael. One of the problems with this ordinance, actually, the ordinance itself is pretty well designed and put forward, but one of the problems is this whole idea of a private party not being subject to these rules. What I'm looking for is language that says if a private party is held in a commercial space, it is subject to the rules for the cabarets. Is that something that can be done? Because that's the nub of the problem.
Yes. So if the council so directs, we can -- staff can certainly propose amendments to the cabaret ordinance, which would expand the definition to include, for example--
Private party held in a commercial space.
-- private parties held in the commercial space.
We're going to hear a lot of horror stories from the people who live adjacent to Trader Vic's. And this is a -- we've tried to go the friendly way, you know, work with them, and nothing changes. Scott and I went down to look at the deck where the music bellows out and gets up into the air. This is a serious problem, and we have to address it. There may be another way rather than the moratorium, because I don't know if you have all looked at this ordinance, we realize it is that one specific definition that is causing the difficulty. Trader Vic's is not responsible if it's a private party. That doesn't make sense. They're the owners and the people who are profiting from that commercial space. So someone has got to be held accountable to the misery that has been suffered by these people. Sorry for the rant, guys.
That was a little more than a clarifying question. So I think without further ado, I'll open it up for public comment. I've got a bunch of speaker cards. If your name -- I'll call up three at a time, and you could just line up behind each other. And then if there's anybody whose name I don't call, and you want to speak, you're welcome to speak too. So first is Fran Chupetta, Marilyn Fullrath, and Mary Farrell. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hi. We at Watergate -- we as Watergate seniors have been reporting to the City Council at the public safety and public safety meetings about all our negative nerve-wracking and noise-ordinance-breaking experiences with Trader Vic's. But I wanted to share a story with you all, an additional story that was just gut-wrenching for me to hear. A young mother walked by my unit with her 15-month-old daughter, and we got to talking. She told me she lives at Four Anchor in a corner with -- that was the closest to Trader Vic's, directly above the foul-smelling garbage bins. I asked her if the noise bothered her at all. She told me that in just one night alone, the music and screaming drunks woke her daughter up five times. Her daughter was crying uncontrollably and was frightened. The mother went down to Trader Vic's five times and asked them to turn down the volume, of course, to no avail. How can this be allowed to continue? Just know there are many more stories like this happening to people who are too afraid to call the police, or they don't even know that they have the option to do so. I am truly disgusted with this situation and vow to fight to see that Trader Vic's is not allowed to continue this despicable behavior toward their neighbors. Oh, P.S., Trader Vic's, have you thought about hiring a competent chef so you can return to your former glory of being a great restaurant? It might solve all of our problems instead of having to deal with all this bullpucky.
I also live at Watergate. I'm Marilyn Fullrath, and I agree that we would like to see a moratorium. It's one thing to live next door to a popular restaurant, and it's something else to live next door to a lousy, loud dive that spills its drunks and its loud music out onto the water right under your window. You talk about danger to our health. How about the Bill of Rights? I've always been impressed with that, because it says you have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And the pursuit of happiness is legally defined as the right to pursue your rights as long as you stay within the law and you do not infringe on someone else's rights. So our former good neighbor wants to expand and infringe on our rights to come home to peace and quiet. And there is none, and you wouldn't believe it unless you listen to it. It drives you crazy. So we ask for a moratorium to save our sanity and give us the right to live in peace and quiet in our homes. And I appreciate your taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mary Farrell, and I live in Five Admiral at Watergate. And I want to digress from my prepared speech to say regarding safety, the drunks from Trader Vic's collapse on the lawns outside, they lie on the grass, they scream foul words, they come inside our garages and urinate because it's too much trouble to walk back in, or maybe they finally closed it. Okay. I support the moratorium, but it's the noise from the parties on the deck that is unacceptable and harmful. It interferes with our quality of life and our ability to sleep. I've gotten headaches, and I've had to go to bed because of the noise. This has been a problem for years, and it is getting worse. Since I have recently retired and am home more, the problem is more than ever. Parties are often twice a day out there, starting before noon, and they're drunk by 12, and they're yelling and screaming. And I'm not exaggerating when I say screaming. They're screaming. Keep in mind that Trader Vic's is still a restaurant. It was never intended to be a nightclub, and they're taking over the deck out there. Did they get planning permission from the city to do that? There's a bar out there. Very short time, they're drunk and screaming. What City allows an outdoor party venue right next to people's homes? When we have called Trader Vic's and asked for help from employees and the management, we have been ignored for years. I've gone down in person many times. I've called many times. I wrote a report in Yelp. Doesn't do any good. Our only recourse is to call the police over and over to enforce noise ordinances. Please change the noise ordinance to make it enforceable at all hours for loud parties. Let's make Trader Vic's take their drunken parties inside and change the ordinance to allow ticketing and severe consequences for violations that are all hours of the day. Please, the noise is making us ill, and I'm not exaggerating, and we love the police department. They're fabulous. And I've left copies of my talk if anybody needs it.
So next is Amy Blossenheim, Lee Shapiro, and Joe Lutz.
Hello. Hi, my name is Amy Blossenheim. I cohabitate with my partner, Lee Shapiro.
We're engaged.
I work, and he's retired. We spend a lot of time at home when I come home from work, and we like to relax and enjoy our time together. And oftentimes, when Trader Vic's is having one of their parties, I go, oh no, here they go again. So what we have to do is close the sliding glass door, turn up the TV, and watch something way too loud, just to drown them out. And what I don't understand is how such a wonderful restaurant that has such a great reputation, that's a landmark of the city of Emeryville, could deteriorate to such a level such as that, and something needs to be done. Thank you.
Lee?
My name is Lee J. Shapiro, and I am a homeowner at Eight Admiral Drive, Unit 241 at Watergate Condominiums. It's commonly called the Complex, Watergate Complex. My condo is almost 500 feet from Trader Vic's. I virtually can look down at Trader Vic's, and I can see people up there, but the worst thing is the hearing. I can -- it's a common occurrence for noise to disrupt my evenings. I mean, it's like their people are in my house. They're yelling and screaming, and after a hard day, when sleep becomes so important, just to have that kind of noise, and yelling, and screaming, and people cursing, I mean, it's amazing. There are animal sounds coming out. I can hear conversations sometimes, they're so loud. And people are drunk. You can tell they're drunk. As the night progresses, the noise gets more boisterous, so until -- so early in the morning, you're probably so upset by being woken up, or being awake. I bought my condo for the serene bayfront setting. That's what I loved about it, and that's why I plan on living there for the rest of my life. And I'm going to turn this page in a second. On nights when there's an outdoor party of Trader Vic's, I am forced to close my windows, which I've already told you that. I don't think that people are having a good time, but not at my -- I don't want -- I do feel people can have a good time, and that's fine, but not at my expense.
Joe Lutz of Watergate, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff. Trader Vic's, when it opened in the early '70s, was a restaurant and a bar, still is. And when it did open, the planning and zoning documents never contemplated a cabaret or nightclub or anything else, because we had nightclubs around the peninsula and everywhere else. So Trader Vic's was never built. It doesn't have the sound mitigations, doesn't have the site or anything for a nightclub or a cabaret. Actually, the problem started probably in the mid-'80s. Until that time, it was operating wonderfully as a great restaurant and bar, standing room only. Then they started -- they created a deck out of whole cloth there and added a bar, and then they added music. So by the early '90s, they were a nightclub, and all hell broke loose after then. So it was really a cycle of noise, and we'd get on them and have the police go over, and they'd stop for a little while, and then it'd come on and come on and come on, to such a point where the 2004 -- 2004 letter that Michael mentioned, finally, that was the straw that broke the camel's back. Now, I've heard rumor that Trader Vic says, hey, you know, this is going to impact our bottom line if we don't have a cabaret. Well, they're the ones who decided to go away from their core competency and engage in activities that are harmful to the environment. It's sort of like the child that shoots his parents and then goes to the judge and wants leniency because he's an orphan. It's ridiculous. It's absurd. So the things that I think need to be done, as Nora pointed out, that you need to get the private parties on commercial property, particularly when they are a selling point, they're sold as part of the process, that needs to be done. Additionally, the condo -- that the fact that they're wanting a cabaret license is an expansion of use, which would require conditions from the planning commission, which I think should be relatively strong in terms of that. But the process, the application process, needs revamping, as we know, but we should take a look at, is it appropriate to have a cabaret next to one of the largest residential areas in the state? And when I say next to, within 20 or 30 feet of a bunch of residents. This is ridiculous. The other thing that needs to be done is the noise ordinance. I looked at that, and I'm chagrined to see that it's ambiguous. Excessive and annoying noises come under Section B, which sort of implies that it's codified in hours. It shouldn't be. The noise ordinance was for typical urban noises, and excessive annoying noises shouldn't be. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Come on up. With or without a speaker card, it's okay. You can line up behind Mr. Carpio.
I think that before the council make any decision pro and con, we would have to go through the technical process of the physics of sound. And for this year, we would have to have a recorder that will register the decibel emitting from Trader Vic and the decibel emitting from the train that pass in railroad track here many, many, many times during the day and the night, and those trains make much, much more noise than the music you can hear at Trader Vic. So that's my point. The second point I want to hear, there is a psychological workout here. I remember when I first moved in Emeryville, I was a piano player, and I played soft music, Chopin, Tchaikovsky, and the neighbor complained. And she said that when I was playing, her TV went funny. And she said the TV was going funny also when I was using the torch, which is nonsense. But this is ignorance, and this is the product of ignorance. And we have emotion mixed to that. And those people, they come here, and they speak very well, they have their thing all the way down, well-written, and all they do is to hurt the business of Trader Vic. They want to shut it down, and they don't want people in Trader Vic to earn a livelihood. And this is bad. You don't allow this kind of thing. This is racketeering. These people are U.P.D. These people are those who collect the rent who goes under by being poor, and that's all they have to do. They collect, they count their money. They don't work. They don't have to work to make a livelihood. Thank you.
Come on up.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys. I'm Kier Fulmer from Trader Vic's, Vice President. I just wanted to say on our side of this, because we've seen all of the emails going back and forth, that we have been in business in the Bay -- we're an institution in the Bay Area. We're not just a restaurant. This is our 81st year in business. We're a fine dining establishment. We are in no way a nightclub, never intended to be, never, never would be. We're being compared to the likes of Silk's and Kimball's East. That's not who we are. As far as drunks on the lawn at noon, we have -- we open at 11:30. I'm not even sure how that could occur. But basically, on our side of everything, where this moratorium is coming into play is at the busiest time of our year, where we have the most -- where we generate the most revenue. And we have worked as hard as we possibly could with all of the Watergate residents, with Mr. Lutz. Every time that we've gotten an email, I've responded myself within an hour, even if I'm traveling, and I have somebody in the restaurant get back to him if I can't myself. We have gone beyond the noise ordinance of the city of Emeryville. We've closed the deck an hour earlier than we're required to. We have had our vendor deliveries come in an hour later than we're required to, trying to accommodate our neighbors. We've done everything we know how to do to be good neighbors, and this -- I have letters from August from Watergate residents thanking us for the hard work that we've done and for, you know, responding as quickly as we have and making the huge difference that we have. So this all started with one buffet on a Sunday when we're normally closed, and there was drumming for two hours. We absolutely opened in 1971, or 1972 when we opened. We had three private dining rooms. Those were always-- Those were always live music. So the 99 cabaret license was way after we opened. But those private dining rooms were opened with the intention of weddings and receptions and anniversaries, and it's a huge restaurant. That's, I mean, that's what we do there. So it would absolutely impact our revenue. As much as anybody's saying it wouldn't, it absolutely would. That's one of the last places in Emeryville where you can still go and have your wedding on the bay. So that's just our side of it. We also have, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, I ran a report starting in May. We give a 20% discount to Watergate residents, and May, June, July, August, we gave 570 covers 20% discount. In September and October, we were down 200 covers from our Watergate discounts, because there's a lot of residents that love us. They're just not here. So we have asked for papers to be signed, and I understand that it impacts, and we really do want to work with our neighbors. We're not trying to be difficult. That is not our intention at all. So that's, I just wanted to present our side of it.
We appreciate your coming tonight.
Mayor, Council staff, my name is Nick Sebastian. I live directly above Trader Vic's at 4-
Can you raise your mic?
I live directly above Trader Vic's at 422 4 Anchor. I appreciate what I just heard from Ms. Fulmer regarding her quick responses to communications that we give on some daily, weekly basis. The issue, though, seems to be a breakdown between her attempts, sometimes successful, sometimes not successful, and the operating staff, who she directs to abate the issues that we raise. We've tried individual meetings, they don't seem to work. That's why it's very important that the council and staff work with all of us to mitigate those issues in a way that allows them to continue a legitimate business, a legitimate profitable business that many people enjoy, but not at the expense of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of Watergate in Emeryville. Thank you very much.
Hang on a second. Come on up. You've already spoken, Joe, so. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Eber, and I actually own the building, and I'm their landlord. And Trader Vic's really, if not the first, we're the second owners, so we go back to day one. And I really believe that they are, have been a fabric of this community for many, many years. And I think there are an awful lot of us around who have had family dinners, and birthdays, and anniversaries, and, you know, life events at that restaurant. And it is almost a historical landmark, it's part of the community. And I appreciate the fact that it's very difficult for residents to be next to a restaurant. I think that, but I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I think that if there are, if they're not allowed to have private events, and, I mean, the cabaret is really just Hawaiian musicians. I used to take my 94-year-old father, you know, every month to listen to Hawaiian music. He just passed away last year. And we went, you know, every month to listen to these Hawaiian musicians, you know, play at Trader Vic's. And anyway, I hope that we can try and resolve something between the community and the restaurant, and try and come up with a solution that maybe isn't quite as extreme and overreaching. And I know that Trader Vic's is trying very, very hard to be good neighbors. I know I have been, I've been the recipient of some of the emails from the residents. And I hope that we can try and come up with some solution that makes everybody happy, and that we can continue to have Trader Vic's as part of the community, as they have been for so many years. 80, I guess. Thank you.
Anybody that hasn't spoken yet?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Nettles, and I'm the General Manager of Bay Street. It's a cabaret license. We're looking at doing 100 events a year, and we support the four times-year quarterly licensing. We just recently were approved for our Urban Indie Festival. Thank you, it went very well. And so we just want to make sure that we're not excluded from holding events on Bay Street. We had a wonderful Halloween event that brought hundreds of families, and we just want to make sure the application process doesn't push us into a bubble where we can't do events for the community. That's it.
All right, well, I see someone who's spoken already who wants to speak again. Is there anybody else who wants to speak a second time? Could raise your hand. All right, Joe.
Thank you very much for this. Ms. Fulmer has been very, very responsive to us, and I have mentioned that to her, and we think she's the best VP of Operations that they've had. However, the issue still is, remains to be the music and the noise on the deck. And it's more than just Hawaiian music by far. It's ridiculously loud. They have rock bands and everything else. And the other thing is, you have to remember, is that they operated for almost 20 years without music and without a deck. So how they can say that this is, like I said, you can't exercise bad judgment and harmful activities and expect to get money for that. That's just not right. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
We're having round two, so come on up.
It will be short. I would just like to address Kier Fulmer also, and would suggest that to mitigate everything, hire a good chef. The people of Watergate don't go there anymore because the food is not good. And who wants to pay a lot of money for bad food? So maybe start there. We're all for Trader Vic's being a successful restaurant. Thank you.
All right, we're doing second rounds here.
So that's it now. We switch from noise to food. I mean, you know, what else? I think this is really sick and misery to the, to the people who are in business. And this is, this is clearly professional bias, you know? People who earn their living other than, than a cabaret or a restaurant, they're not involved in critics like that, you know, the bankers and all those people, and all those rich landlords, they're not criticized by the way they do, they push around paperwork and all that, you know? So, I mean, we have to get off of this complaining cycle of people who are working. That's all they do. In order to earn their living, they have to do some work, some noise, some dust, you know, some fume. They have to do, this is part of the friction of the material that they handle, that's all. So, you know, as I said, when I was playing piano, I could not satisfy the neighbor, had to move the piano to another room. And then after that, you know, it was bothering her TV, you know? I mean, it's crazy. Thank you.
All right. So I'm cut off public comment at this point. I have a question for the police chief. Our current noise ordinance says that the police should respond to a citizen complaint when a noise disturbance has been going on for 15 minutes or longer. That would be disturbing to anybody of normal sensitivity, and that's a rough paraphrase. So what's been the PD response to noise complaints emanating from the restaurant?
So we have responded when we received a call for service. As I explained in the last Public Safety meeting, we haven't received an inordinate amount of complaints of noise directly to the police department, but we have been working with the community. When we respond to noise complaints, we try to mitigate it and have, and make a request for them to stop if there's a violation. The noise has to be unreasonable, and this is a business. And so at times, it's because it is a business, and they are allowed to have music, it's difficult for an officer to determine that it's unreasonable if it's not during the prohibited hours of the noise ordinance, which is 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, and 9:00 p.m. to 7, Saturday, or 8:00 a.m. Saturday and Sunday. And we have not issued any citations for violation of the noise ordinance that I'm aware of, since I've been here.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff amongst the council?
Well, I'd just like to say, I appreciate that Trader Vic's is an institution, been here a long time, and nobody wants Trader Vic's to go away. What we do want is the noise to go away. And it's very disturbing, I know. Our new police chief has kind of walked into a firestorm here. But the thing is, it does no good if police respond and take no action, because in their judgment, the noise is not excessive for a commercial establishment. This is a commercial establishment right butted up against a residential area. So I think the problem lies not only with the cabaret ordinance, but also with the noise ordinance. It's too subjective. We have to be able, when people call with legitimate complaints, whether it's from Watergate, or whether it's from 1500 Park, wherever it's from, when the officer goes there, there should be a clear and definitive pattern to follow, so that if the noise is excessive for the neighborhood, you know, and we're talking again about a residential neighborhood, that action, action will be taken. Not just a little tap on the wrist, but to turn off the noise or be subjected to a fine. So we don't, we not only have the cabaret license that we've got to take a look at here, we also have to look at the noise ordinance. And Charlie, we also have to look at the planning and zoning regulations. You know, there's, there's real, there's an upside to a mixed-use city, and there's a downside. This is the downside of a mixed-use city. We want to live amicably together with the commercial establishments and the residential. I don't, in consideration of reading Mr. Geena's very, very good report, I don't believe that the moratorium is going to solve this problem. I think, this is my own personal opinion, I think what we have to do is make a change to the cabaret ordinance, which in essence is a pretty good ordinance, but we have to include in their language that says, private parties that are held in a commercial establishment are subject to the cabaret rules. Then we will hold them accountable. That's a different process. It takes a little, might take a little longer, but we're not faced with the moratorium issue. And right now, a moratorium doesn't affect Trader Vic's, because they don't have a cabaret license, and probably will not move forward with their application. But we do have to change that ordinance. We have to change the noise ordinance, so that when the police go out in this city, they have an arm to turn down the noise.
Right, right.
And then, and then also planning and zoning. So I would like a suggestion either from Mr. Geena or the police chief, how we proceed on this. I have to say, I don't think the moratorium is an exercise that's going to help us. I think the changing of the, of the cabaret license has to be done, and we should put that on a regular agenda for, for the first week in December.
So I'm generally supportive of your, of your comments, Nora. And to my Watergate neighbors in town, you're touching on something that was near and dear to me in my first term, because, and I'll take a little liberty with the mic here, to tell my story about noise conflicts. I was a first-time homebuyer, and I couldn't sleep the first night I put my head down in my condo, because AC Transit had their hydraulic tools going to change their tires 24/7. There was a nine-tone employee car alarm that went off for hours at end, and in terms of purchasing a place in Emery Bay Village, I had no idea what I'd gotten myself into. And so this mixed-use idea, so then it's like I got involved with noticing the postcards that the city of Emeryville was sending to everybody, because mixed-use, they're definitely compatible, and then there are incompatible uses. And to be, to have a residential complex located next to an industrial use was pretty incompatible around noise. So I actually led the, the effort to revamp our noise ordinance. What we had on the books before this one, current one, had to do with peddlers hawking their wares from the street. I mean, it was a little, it was kind of quaint, but kind of beside the point in terms of what we needed. So what we're living with now is a first real overhaul of the noise ordinance from that time. And that was around 1999, 2000, something like that, when we brought that to council and had our legal expertise and other staff involved in drafting this. So this is a, this has been a very complex issue, but in terms of living compatibly together in an urban area, noise is where most of the conflict happens. So we have to be intelligent about how to address noise conflict in terms of being able to live together in close proximity. 20% of our population lives in Watergate, and it's a kind of, not the highest density housing that we have, but it's a pretty, it's a medium-density housing, so it affects a lot of people. So that being said, one of the first changes we have to make in the noise ordinance is to make sure that the noise ordinance talks about the people who are being adversely impacted. So to have a police officer respond to a noise complaint and say, well, they're just a business, of course they're going to generate noise, that doesn't cut it. If that's how our police are interpreting the noise ordinance, to say, well, as an establishment, they're allowed to make noise, no. They're not allowed to engage in, in noise that disrupts sleep and other basic human needs. And in terms of the drunken behavior of the patrons emanating from the restaurant, that's a whole other issue. It seems to me that that's a disturbing-the-peace kind of call, too, that the police should be responding to more aggressively than it sounds like they are. So when we look at the redoing the noise ordinance, we have to look about the people who are complaining because they're being adversely impacted, not because it's standard operating procedure for the noise generator. That, the onus, the onus is put in the wrong place, if that's how the police officers are interpreting it. Anybody who complains for a noise that lasts 15 minutes or longer, that would be objectionable to anybody of, quote, "normal sensitivity," that's a valid complaint. So I think there's some re-education that has to happen with the police department, but we also have to revamp the, the noise ordinance about these conflicts. I guess you want to say something, Chief, here.
Yeah.
But you're, you're getting me going here on, on something that I've, it's been near and dear to me for decades in this town.
Well, if I gave the impression that we're not responding and not taking action, that's incorrect. We are responding within our means to respond. And I think the residents here would agree, that when they call, they do get service from the police department. They're all nodding, yes, thank you. So we are serving them within the means that the ordinance and the law allows us to. The officers can't decide, well, today I'm going to enact this law for this group, but not for that group. There's no special privilege that the police have to enact, or to enforce a law for one group and not another, and decide it's good for here and not there. They have to base their decision on the entire situation and the facts. They haven't issued a citation because it hasn't warranted, since I've been here, I can't speak to before, but they have taken action and contacted Trader Vic's and asked for the noise to be lowered or stopped, and Trader Vic's has complied, I think, in almost every situation that we have been involved in. We have not received calls for service about people- We have not received calls for service about people urinating or lying on the lawn or screaming that I am aware of. If we have, I am confident that the officers have responded to that and taken appropriate action. So my apologies if I led you to believe that we're not taking action. We are. We're taking reasonable action and, and listening to the residents. We've been working with the residents and responding to their issues.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a few comments about the situation out there. I was recently at an event in the room right adjacent to the deck, the, the deck that seems to generate most of the noise problems. And I went out on the deck, and in fact, there is a bar on the deck, and I got a drink at the bar on the deck. And I looked up at all the windows and residents looking down at me as I was getting my drink at the deck. And it's kind of remarkable how the proximity of it all is. And also, I want to say that the design of the bar and the back, the L shape that faces away from the wind is lovely if you're on the deck because you're sheltered from the wind. It is such a gorgeous location. However, that same shape, from a sound point of view, projects the sound right to Watergate. And I think that if Trader Vixx was serious about keeping that unbelievably great deck a viable thing for the future, they, they should invest in a quality sound engineer because a good sound engineer could make that deck usable and dramatically reduce the noise. But it would have to be designed in such a way that it would prevent the sound waves from going to Watergate. And I think from looking at the situation and being familiar with sound mitigation because of various things in my professional career, I think it could be done. I think that the, the parties could be compatible, living together. But it would be a serious investment for Trader Vixx. The, the owner of your building there is, would have to really get a sound engineer who knows what they're doing and really look at it. And the city of Emeryville, I think, would be positively predisposed to any design that would solve that issue. And, you know, the, so I, I think that, you know, we, we would, as a city, love to keep Trader Vixx, but it just seems impossible to keep it the way it is right now for just, they, I can tell, it's just hardly any noise in that circumstance amplifies it to the residents. And it's amazing it's gone on this long, from my point of view, just looking at the circumstance. And I, I think we need to look at our cabaret license, not just for Trader Vixx, but citywide. I think it's an important distinction about private party, you know, versus, I think we have to straighten that out, and I think we have to look at our noise ordinance.
I don't have a lot new to add. I, there seems to be agreement that a moratorium for an annual cabaret license is not the right tool to affect the noise that we hear is coming from Trader Vixx and really affecting the residents at Watergate. And I agree, we, this is a good time to look at our noise ordinance and our cabaret license insofar as it applies to private parties. But I want to ask Vice Mayor Davis and Mayor Atkins, who, you know, were in Emeryville in 2004, if the, the gathering of all parties was helpful because it seemed to actually have an effect at the time. And maybe Mr. Lutz would be able to speak to this. I invite you up to, to let me know. If, if the city were to mediate a meeting between all concerned parties, would this have an effect?
Joe, before you go ahead.
Yeah, right.
Diane, if I could just say, there was a, a lot of time and effort went into that meeting and the follow-up, and it did cause some changes. However, Trader Vixx is a large corporation. They change management quite regularly, and when management changes, the institutional memory is gone and we're right back at square one. We need to have the tools to control that noise in that location. And this is not just that location, it's citywide. We have residents jammed up against commercial spaces. We've got to look at this seriously. How are we going to control this? So that people can make a living commercially, but people who are living in their homes can, can have a quality of life. And I strongly support Mayor Atkins and her first, her first noise ordinance.
Yeah, that was my first legislative change here. Yeah.
The, on the noise ordinance, the, the idea that you brought up, Mayor Atkins, was, is that, and the way I thought it was going to be, was that typical urban noises would be codified in certain hours, but excessive noise would not be. And that's, that's a little bit ambiguous, and that's what causes the, the police to have their issue because they can't, there's not really something defined that they can do.
Okay, all right.
And, but as far as your question on 2004, actually, what happened was, there was very little follow-up and very few, if any, of the agreements were, were actually kept by Trader Vixx.
So then my comment to that is that I hope Trader Vixx will be very involved in whatever we're looking at, and please, you know, give comment along the way so that we can come to a compromise that is codified in law, that the city can control.
Right.
But still allows for you to do your business in a reasonable fashion.
All right. So I think the staff has direction here. It seems as though we don't have a majority to go with a moratorium. We do want to see revisions to the noise ordinance and a reworking of the cabaret license to, at a future council meeting that applies to private parties.
Mayor Atkins, if possible, could we bring that language? It's going to be a very small paragraph in the, in the ordinance, but it's something that needs to be done and done fairly quickly. Michael, could you get that together for the first meeting in December?
Yes, I can. And to clarify, to clarify the amendment that you're looking for in the cabaret license, what I'm hearing from the council is that they're looking to amend the cabaret ordinance to include, as the, within the definition of a cabaret, private parties which are held in, in commercial, in commercial uses, in commercial venues.
That's it. That's enough of it.
If there's another way of talking about it without this term of cabaret, of use of amplified music or other kinds of things, then maybe that can be added into the definition under this ordinance?
It's possible. I mean, the idea behind, you know, the discussion tonight was that our current definition of cabaret excludes private parties. And so in order to require a private party to have a cabaret license, you need to capture them within the definition of what constitutes a cabaret.
The rest of the ordinance is very well done.
So maybe, maybe, maybe we're, maybe the term cabaret is a little archaic at this point.
Okay.
So maybe we could talk about just kind of in general, more kind of noise generating events and particularly in the mixed-use areas or something. I don't, I don't know. I mean, this is, or maybe entertainment events or social events or something that just seems a little more modern.
Mayor Atkins, may I, may I ask if there's a distinction to be made between interior and exterior music?
Currently, currently, the definition of the cabaret, the definition of a cabaret does not distinguish between whether the event is held indoors or outdoors. So if the city council direction is to include that distinction, that would be helpful to know. So to answer your question, a cabaret could be an event that's being held outdoors as well as an event that's held indoors.
Well, you know, we, we have events in the park. You know, we show movies, we have live bands. I mean, maybe we need to be thinking, they don't get a cabaret license, they just get an event permit.
That's right.
So, so those kind of issues need to be, those kind of events aren't that dissimilar.
That's correct.
Because it's amplified music or projecting, in the case of the movies or whatever.
Sure. And is the, so in drafting some of this, in drafting this, this, these amendments to the cabaret license, it would be helpful to know if the, if the will of the council is to make a distinction to how, as to whether or not a cabaret is an event that's held indoors or outdoors.
Well, noise can leak outside. I mean, that's, I mean, something that starts inside can still be disruptive to people outside of the building.
Yeah, the issue is the noise. It's not the inside or the outside. It's the noise that goes across the, the property line. That's the issue here.
Okay. So.
You can be inside a building, and if you have a band in there that's amplified up to the kazoo, you're going to have noise outside the building across the property line.
Sure.
Mayor Atkins, there's, there's another issue that, that we don't want to lose here, and that is, we want a plan and a timeline for revising that noise ordinance.
Right.
And can we get some input from Carolyn, how we can push that forward? This is getting, going to be an increasingly important problem in the city.
My experience with noise ordinances is that they can be quite complex. And so we will absolutely do all that we can to address this, working with staff, the community development department, the city attorney.
And when can you bring a first draft of suggestions for revises back on that noise ordinance?
Noise ordinance. So.
This is impacting the people who live in this city.
Sure.
This is a very critical issue.
I, yes, I understand that. I understand that this is a priority for the council. However, I'd also like, I don't want to rush this either because I want to make sure that it is capturing some of the issues that I'm hearing from the council and from members of the public as well as members of your business community as well. So I'd like to be a little bit more thoughtful about how to approach this. What I would propose to do is at, perhaps at my introduction of the first reading of the cabaret ordinance revision, we can prevent, we can present you also with a timeline of when the noise ordinance amendments could come forward.
Very good.
That's, that's good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I want to thank all the Watergate folks and for Trader Vixx for coming tonight and Bay Street for coming, too, because this has larger ramifications for the, for the city. We've got a lot crammed into one square mile, and this really speaks to the heart of like how we're going to be able to live together compatibly. So thank you, and I think we're done on this subject for, for this evening. That takes us to...